Our gracious heavenly father, we are so grateful for your mercy and your grace. Lord, we need your presence tonight in this room. We need your peace. We need a supernatural understanding that we don't have in and of ourselves. Please help us to do your business first of all, and then do the best business we can for the citizens of Kennet. We love you, and we thank you. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special call business meeting to discuss the CON as a hospital.
I want to thank the other five council members for making this meeting happen, to which you were asked Tuesday night to call a special meeting for the hospital, and you refused to do so. I want that in the books, that to you it was not important or not as important as San Francisco Street. When San Francisco Street was built...
The CON.
Let me finish, please. You were here in every meeting, every council meeting, asking for updates. What's happening with San Francisco Street? Apparently, the hospital is not as important to you as San Francisco Street, because your motivation went from 100% to 0%. And I want to ask you directly, do you have any conflict of interest with the hospital? Do you get any kind of investment in the hospital? Why, why it's not a priority? Do you look around, how many people is here, and how many made phone calls and asks for updates for the hospital?
That I have zero money invested?
Okay. So you didn't think it was important to have a special meeting between now and the renewal of the CON?
The CON comes up on September 14th, and we have a meeting...
Now, you were under the impression that it was coming up September the 4th, and the next council meeting would have been the 7th, and there would have not been any discussion. There were enough council members Tuesday night here to have the meeting. You were counting on me to be out of town. Nobody had called me. I didn't, I never said I wasn't coming. So we had enough council members here to have the meeting. So for some reason, that meeting was canceled. So I want to thank the other five councilmen that made this possible. So all I wanted, to have an open discussion about the CON.
Okay.
Because it's taken way, way too long. It was September the 4th when I flew the group up there, which I backed up 100% from day one. I was on the hospital committee. That committee put everything on hold, and we backed these people up since day one. My understanding was, once they got the CON, they were ready to start. Or they should have not, not gone up there to get the CON if they were not ready to start. That's what a normal entity would, would have done. So they pulled the trigger, we backed them up 100%, we never had zero updates of what's happening. To me, more, it's been more than a year. We're not looking any better than we did two years ago. And to me, and to the rest of us here in this room and in town, the hospitals are number one priority.
Yes, it is.
I don't care if we had 10 San Francisco Streets, that they were still functional, and they were still holding water, it was a long-term fix. We could have fixed it. The hospital, we need to prioritize. We need an update every council meeting. Where's the owners of the hospital? Where's their representatives? How many times have you talked to them? I asked you Tuesday night, have you got an update? Yes, you said, yes, I do, but I'm not going to share it with you.
That's because that is their private entity.
Okay, where are they? Have you talked to them? We've asked several times for them to be present and give us an update. We need a hospital. We can't wait.
So from the standpoint, they're a private entity.
I understand.
I have very limited information.
Okay, that's why we're here, to see what our options are. We can't wait. I can't wait. The people that they're calling me, they can't wait.
That's the question, what are the other options? Everybody's talking about other options, but nobody said anything.
Yeah, there, there's other options, yes. We, we had a hospital committee, which you, you were part of, Marco, I understand, you were there in some of the meetings?
Yeah, 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 that's, that's people that wanted all the money for, you know, to build and all that, but yeah. Do we have an option up at the cost of taxpayers?
We, we, we... Wait, wait. It's worth checking into those options. We may, we may not, but we can, we can be waiting.
That's what we're trying to figure out, if, if there might be. That, that's what this meeting is about.
We hired the consultant for that, for that purpose, to reach out to other people and put an RFP out, a request for proposals, and this group came up and said, we're ready to build, so we need the CON. So we put everything on hold, as you're aware, you're well aware of it. You were part of that committee. And so, there's other people here that they belong, that were on that committee.
Yeah, no, no, I get it. There was a startup company, and all those big companies, you're right, but, you're right, but I'm, I'm, now, it's things like that, somebody has like an idea.
That's why we're having this meeting, to see where we go from here. We can't wait anymore. We're not going anywhere with this route.
Got you.
So...
I, I talked to State today, and I talked to the people that control it, Certificate of Need. And what I was told is that, as of right now, this company is in compliance with everything, and she said it, no reason that she saw that the Certificate of Need would not be extended. I asked her about if there were letters and if people were to come up and discuss that, would that be, would that change it? She said that would be highly unusual, that they would allow somebody to come in and speak, but, she said, things unusual happen a lot nowadays.
They will accept letters.
Yeah, that, that they will accept that.
If there's enough opposition, they will consider evoking the CON.
But she said, as of this date, everything was in compliance.
It can be for the next 10 years.
If they, the actual date of the meeting is in November, and not September 14th...
Would the possibility that we move to the 14th?
If somebody on the board would step it up to September 14th, then it would be delayed. Also, I've got a letter here, that's from the Department of Natural Resources, that says, as of the 30th of August, the asbestos removal can begin for the former Twin Rivers Hospital. And so that clears them out to begin that asbestos removal. She asked me if they're...
It's not the beginning of construction, though.
No, it just...
That's not even the beginning of demolition?
No, it just is a letter of approval to begin to remove asbestos.
Victor, when was the demolition permit, sorry to interrupt you, Bill. When was the demolition permit applied for?
The first one?
Oh, is there been two of them?
Yes.
Okay.
It was, it was extended because it went past the 90 days.
Has there been any demolition then?
No, no.
Other than scrapping copper and a few other?
No.
Somebody even said that, let's put a scenario out there, that CHS is talking to these people, and they're, they're telling them, hold on to this certificate of need. We want you to hold on to it. What do we do? There's got to be other options.
I think, I think they're more than likely...
In my life, I've been patient, I've been fair. Giving them a year is more than enough time, when it comes down to a hospital. It's not a street, it's not a small project. It's a necessity for this town to have healthcare. Older people are leaving, younger people are not coming into town, because there's no future for them here, especially in the medical field.
It's 200 jobs that leaves the...
200 jobs that we, we can benefit from building a hospital, but the main thing, we need healthcare here.
I, I, I assume somebody's going to tell us if there's somebody that definitely would do this, but the way I understand everything, was the people that have offered in the past also wanted money from the city, from what we know.
Does anybody know how much money that was? I'm curious.
900, varied from 40,000 a month, to 600,000 a year, and 900,000 a year. Those are that they wanted the city to contribute.
Those are guaranteed?
Yes.
I agree.
And, you know, we can't want 40, even the 40,000.
But we need to proceed to Plan B.
Yes, or we need, we need some guarantees, some schedules, something.
We've been asking for...
We need participation, right?
We, we've been asking for timeframes, we have given nothing. We asked for financial information, we have given nothing.
With the Council of Farmers, the, some of those numbers, I'm not disputing the numbers, but they were never presented to a hospital committee. I attended all the meetings. We never got to that point. The hospital committee was capped off when the mayor decided to have a media conference, I think on May 14th. That stopped all actions.
Same day, right.
That day stopped all action.
Same day.
St. Menards, all your local hospitals, it stopped immediately there. Once you got to that point, there's no need for anyone else to waste their time and resources pursuing this.
Makes sense.
So there was never any numbers, those numbers that you, I've heard those numbers also, but they were never presented to any body in the city.
We never seen the actual four proposals that they were supposed to be turned in, because we put, this, this entity said, we're ready for the CON, so we put everything on hold. At some point, we thought about running paddle over to them and have that option be available to us at cost, but since they said they were ready to build, they were on track and everything, would have been on schedule, we decided to back off and, and back this entity 100%.
Well, just out of curiosity, because I don't know, how long does it take to go from no hospital, to having a hospital? Does anybody actually know the answer to that?
It depends. If we have the right timeline wise, though, I'm just curious. I, I don't have...
Jake may have.
Our consultant mentioned about three years, is what it takes, to start from where we are today, to open the door. And that's with anybody right now.
Is that the minimum? Is that the maximum, roughly?
No, it's just average.
Average?
You know, you've got different sized hospitals, you've got different situations. A rural hospital like this is going to be easier to construct than something in St. Louis downtown.
That's true.
So it's just an average.
May I speak, so, I just wanted to speak personally.
Say, say your name.
My name's Andrew Sandoval, and I'm a healthcare provider here in town. I moved to this town myself, my family's from here, and I know personally, I've been affected by the hospital not being here in town. There's a lot of patients that I treat, that are high-risk, and you know, compromised patients, that I'm not, that I, I feel it's a little dangerous, and when I, when I do certain procedures for them. If the hospital were here in town, they'd have a better chance if some emergency situation were to happen. That being said, if the, if the hospital does come to town, not only will it help bring more healthcare providers and more workers to town, it can also help bring future employers and employees for, for different companies, because they, at minimum, for them to come and recruit to the city, they need to have that hospital in town. And we're not going to see that growth in this town without a hospital. Now, this, and you guys have the Certificate of Need, that in my opinion, I think it's a failure to give it to one particular group or individual, because the city's what needs it, not that individual group. That being said, you mentioned yourself that it is a private entity, and we're not able, almost as if we're not able to question them, or get information from them. What's very important, when they're getting something done for the cities, for the citizens of this city, is accountability. And if we're not able to get accountability from them, this really is a lost cause, and we're just, all just wasting our times here, if we're not able to account and, and hold them accountable for that. If a year has happened, and the only thing that's happened is that they received a Certificate of Need, they're absolutely wasting our time. There's no way that you can flip it, or explain it to me in any way, shape, or form, that they're actually doing something. Not one single thing has been done. Not asbestos has been cleaned, not a single stone has been taken down, not a single brick has been laid. Time is just being wasted, and it's a shame, it really is a shame, because in your position, I think that should be a more pressing matter, because you are in the healthcare field as well, and you understand that there is that need here. We're talking about a certificate of need. The word "need" is in there ironically, so we do need it. So we need to all just put all our self-interests aside, and, and make it happen. I personally, I'll be honest, I've considered leaving because there is, there, I don't have that support of the hospital, and if I had it, I'll be able to treat more patients and help. There's patients that I tell them, it's too dangerous for me to do it here, you have to go see an oral surgeon. They, they go bonkers, because they don't have no other choice. They say, I can't even, I can't, they don't have the resources to go out there. We're not thinking of the citizens when they have heart attacks, when they have car accidents. They have to drive out 20 minutes to, to the closest hospital, which is, I'm not too familiar with the towns, I apologize, but it's Pigott.
Pigott.
Pigott and Hayti, and which I, with all, you know, I'm not trying to bash any hospitals, but I, they've referred Pigott Hospital many times as a bandage hospital. So if we're able to have that hair, that care need here, and that emergency care here, we'll be able to impact more people, and ultimately, help and use that Certificate of Need for something useful. So it'd be, it'd be, it'd be amazing if every time you guys can meet up, if you guys, just as, as, as Mr. Panus has mentioned, if you have that same drive and that same motivation, as what you've done some good for the city, continue with that, to bring this hospital. It's going to take three years, as a gentleman said, it's going to take time, but if we're just playing around, we need to, if, even if they're a private entity, that Certificate of Need needs to be switched over, and it needs to be given to either the city itself, if it can be, or given to an individual or a group that's actually going to proceed. So i- if, is there something that I'm missing? I'm all ears. Is there, as far as accountability, I'll take it back to that. What have you heard or know about personally, that, that there, that they can be accounted for, something that they have done, or am I missing something here?
Well, just as of recent, they have their permit for the asbestos removal.
That, that's, that's, that's the second one, as mentioned, and they haven't still, they have the, the permit. So in a year, they received a permit, a permit to remove asbestos, and the asbestos was still not removed. Do you find that acceptable?
Well, it doesn't go into effect until August 3rd.
So, so, it's the second one, first of all, but besides that, do you find it acceptable that in a year...
That it's not done?
That they, though, all that they accomplished is to get a, hell, you can give me the Certificate of Need, and I'll give you, I'll, I can do the same for you. I can do the exact same thing for you, get a permit to remove asbestos. What does that do for the city? In a year, that's all they've done? Is there anything else that I'm missing here?
No, there's, I know they've removed a lot of things from the inside, what's on, what all they've removed, and started internal. I haven't toured it in...
Salvaging equipment, and they're selling copper, that's all they're doing.
So, so in a year, they've removed the equipment from the inside, they've removed copper, and they got a permit for asbestos. Is that correct?
Hang on a second, because, yeah, go ahead, Marco.
The reason why they did the salvage job is they had to remove a lot of the pipe they had wired to get to the asbestos. So yes, there was a salvage job, or maybe they were pushed up, but they had to do that order to get asbestos, so I didn't know what to say.
So what you're saying, Marco, is that the Department of Natural Resources, Resources was setting roadblocks, and that's why they're delayed? Am I reading that right?
Well, it's a little bit, I don't know exactly what happened, but...
So everything else is in place, once the asbestos is removed, we're ready to move forward. They got plans, they got the financing, and they're ready to go on, correct?
I don't think anybody's actually on the race.
Well, so, either way, those are the, am I correct, what those are the two things that have been done?
Internal demolition and asbestos permits.
Okay, so that's it, in a year. I, to me, I find that unacceptable.
That's, that's why we're here.
You're right. So then, so, moving forward, though, if you guys still continue, which I think is a disaster, you guys continued with these, with this group, and it's a waste of time, but if you guys do continue, I'll go back to the same word, accountability. Is there anything that you guys will have in place, where you can set timeframes and accountability? And if those goals are not met, real actions, indisciplinary actions, or removal of CONs are done? Some sort of consequences for these actions? Is anything of that in place? Because if that's not in place, nothing's going to get done, ever. So I ask you, is that in place?
What consequences do we actually set to a private entity as a city?
So it can't be done? Is that...
No, I'm asking you. I don't know.
I, I don't know, I'm not in, I'm not in, I'm not in the political side, so I just...
I'm not, it is a good question, sir.
That's a legal question.
I'm not in the term.
Fantastic. So what we're saying essentially is, we're at their mercy, and there's absolutely, they have their Certificate of Need, and we're at their mercy. We need it, and it's up to them, a private entity, to do whatever they want, whenever they want, as long as they want. Is that correct?
If we choose to try to eliminate them from the system, from this program, what we would have to do, would be to do the letter writing, the campaigning, basically do a campaign to try to get the depart, to get the Certificate of Need Department to deny it to them.
Okay.
And that's, that's what this is all about tonight.
And are they the only ones that can be, can a secondary Certificate of Need be given to a different entity?
Not until they forfeit it, or...
So we're at their mercy, essentially.
Well, that's right, right now, with their...
Well, the rumors were out, that they were trying to market that CON as well.
So this is a waste...
That's why I called.
I'm saying rumors.
Yeah, that's why I did not want to have any second information.
I don't know if it's marketable.
Or that's milk, too.
Is it marketable? Does anybody?
It is, it is.
It can be sold? Can you?
Fantastic.
So is that the concept?
But that would be their forfeit of the Certificate of Need.
Which is extremely difficult to, well, I'm saying, to revoke is extremely difficult, and they're not going to give it up. Who, who's going to give up something they got for free?
And something that they can make money off of.
Exactly, nobody.
But that...
So we're always giving our time to do it.
There's going to be a way.
Essentially, essentially, by doing this, it was a disastrous mistake for the city of Kennet, period.
We didn't have any control in terms of the Certificate of Need, but that's, we can't get a Certificate of Need as a city. That's not...
We supported this, the need, you supported it, but it's not accepted. We, I don't understand what that, people don't understand about that. All we do is support.
We, we supported it, but there, there's got to be a timeframe there, that we, I mean, we've got to see results.
Yes, sir.
I agree, it's been, it's been a while. You throw COVID, and everybody else is knowing it, and that, that an issue?
Say that one more time, please, Marco.
Has COVID been an issue? Kind of shut, shut...
I don't think so.
Come on now.
It's a legitimate question, since there are a lot of people in this room that aren't wearing masks, so it is a legitimate question.
Well, I mean...
That's something, that's something for the group to answer.
I agree.
We've got somebody wanting to answer.
I agree.
Marco, our representative here.
Marco, we have a public comment.
Okay.
Yes, again, my name is Jim Colehauer, lived here since 1983. My first comment is, I feel like a lot of the uncertainty, and maybe some of the issues we're into tonight, could have been avoided somewhat by more public information as to what was going on. Rather than forming a committee, pretty much to me, I've been told in secret, as to developing the plans and what to be done with a new hospital, without making the citizens prove it to this situation, negotiation, trying to make a step forward, and all of a sudden, we're presented with buying a piece of property here, and it's off and run. That is one aspect, I feel like could have been made not as controversial as it's become among most of whom when I talk to. My question basically is, not knowing your permit to build, or whatever, if it's just geared for one particular form of building, but I'm just asking, if you have considered a scaled-down, 24-hour-a-day emergency room center, with possibly five to 10 beds, to take people if they need to be, you know, in a room for a short period of time, we have enough large medical entities within 50 miles around us, we have helicopters, that once you can stabilize people, have their problem under control, and I don't see the point in us building a situation where we're also going to be able, want to house them throughout their recuperation, when they're able to leave the hospital. Why could we not have something we could more afford, that would, if you have a problem, my wife and I both have been to that unit out here, due to accidents. Number one, I did not know, if you have an accident after 7 o'clock, you're out of luck. The doors close at 7:00. And there are many small towns that you can go through, and they will have a two-story, one-story, but not unusual to see a two-story emergency care type unit, staffed with people who, if you go in there with a broken arm, or a cut forehead, or whatever, it can be handled. And then if you need, yes, sir.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Dr. Jane might be able to answer that better than I can. From the meetings that we've attended, with the consultants we spoke to, an emergency room cannot sustain itself?
Well, he said, have six beds.
Six beds?
You can do it.
With beds, rather than going to where looking at 200 and 400...
I missed that part about the six rooms, but bigger facility, just an emergency room cannot stay profitable?
Well, I'm saying, where you have a room facility for a medical group, since you have access to all the other hospitals, that are St. Menards, Northeast Arkansas, Papa Bluff, Cape...
And again, we put all those plans aside, backing this group up, thinking that we're moving forward with the full-scale hospital.
Yes, but also, I feel like you haven't really thought through the process of 200 people filling those jobs, when everything you read in regard to healthcare, the south part of Missouri, Tennessee, Arkansas, and Kentucky are dying trying to find people to fill those slots, and we're here proposing to do 200. You'd be having a very expensive food service system.
That was not our only option, we had...
Well, that's what I'm asking of, what if you're thinking, I've not heard anything except a full-scale hospital? Nothing on an alternative, smaller, more emergency care, 24-hour-a-day, not that you have to break your arm before 7 o'clock?
There were, there were some thoughts given into that, there, we had some options that...
Well, we're at the point now, and I will drop this, but we're at the point where I feel, again, some of these issues, I could have made them in a public hearing at the get-go, and it might have sparked somebody's, you know, thought process, say, we might ought to look at a 24-hour-a-day, you know, situation, where now, we're into all this, and I would be real careful also, about conflict of interest among the council and people that are involved in construction, demolition, or anything else. I think that's a point that needs to also be addressed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I appreciate what you all do.
Thank you.
In behalf of, in just, with people that have it right now, they did have the Facebook Live meeting, and they brought all their corporate, corporate people in, and they did have floor plans, they explained why the number of beds, they went through everything in that meeting. And it was poorly attended, I don't know how many people were on Facebook, I was the only person, city, county, whatever, that went to it. But they were very, very thorough in what they were wanting to do and their reasons for it. The problem still, I see it, is they're a private entity. We had, how many, how many committees were there to discuss all this, to go through all this? Three?
We started out with three, tried to combine them down to one.
And we, how many people were involved in that, total?
Close to 30.
30. And so, I'd say, my suggestion is, if this stuff comes back up again, volunteer, get out there and let your opinion be known, because...
Well, and let people know, let people, citizenry know. And if they don't show up, they don't show up. But this has been not announced or solicited from the outside. It was like it was all worth it, done and over with and then boom, we're buying property.
So Bill, you said we had plans, they had everything laid out, what's the whole? Why, why we're not moving forward, do you think things in place? That's why we need to have. They have a good intention, but they're, they're not giving us any timeframe and they're not showing us any.
I agree, I think that's a big problem for it.
Mr. Crafton?
I've been sitting here listening to this and, uh, I'm Frank Crafton. And to me, we've got folks over here wanting to change it, folks over here not saying a word, not getting involved with it. Now, I think the council of the group needs to come together and have them meeting themselves and get this thing lined up. I don't know who this COE is, what this stuff is. Stan's worked a lot on this thing right here, I understand that. But Stan is a private individual like myself, you guys are the ones that need to be getting this resolved. Now, I sat there in the corner talking to each other about everything, a pile of pen over here, a pile of people over here. You've got to come together as one unit and get this town a hospital. I want to see a hospital, this town has to have one or it's gonna die.
Yes, sir.
You've got to be big enough to support this town. And support the industry that will not come here if there is no hospital.
And our businesses need.
Now, this bickering needs to quit and get this hospital.
I don't like bickering, I want some answers too, that's what this is about tonight.
I don't think you'll find a citizen in this town that says that we don't need a hospital.
Ms. House?
Not only am I a business owner in the town, but I have lupus. And because if we have no hospital, I don't get my treatment. My doctors are in Memphis.
Put your phone on mute.
Turn it down. But the treatment they won't give me, if I have any kind of reaction to them, twenty minutes is too far. We need a hospital.
Anybody in this room thinks we don't? I'm curious. I, I, she's a pity, you know, there's no doubt about it, we just gotta figure out how to go about it.
But I will tell you something.
We need what we can afford to have.
Immediately, Dr. Jane will back me up on this, we had multiple deaths because we did not have a local hospital.
But I will also tell you this, as a business owner, I have clients that call me and say that we're affected by the shutdown of our hospital and they were forced to go out of town for work. I'm not going to make it in time because they are my last client of the day. Sorry, because they have to drive an hour back to town. And there's nothing, I mean, I feel bad. And I stay open. Our town needs it. So, it's the last one. But please.
Mr. Crafton?
Please come to the.
One more question. Why do we have to, are we obligated since it's a private company going to that hospital? Are we obligated to build the hospital right there? Why can't we just leave that thing, let's most, let them worry about their own house?
The property side is not the, the problem. The CON is the problem right now, they're holding the CON, the certificate of need.
So we can't do nothing, nowhere in this town because they got the CON.
Correct, sir, that's correct.
Correct.
One individual can control this town.
Correct, yes, sir.
For one company.
If they own the CON.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
They can't issue another. That's why we're here, trying to figure out the way.
Technically, they could issue another one if they want.
What being that reason?
Because the need is only for one hospital.
Yeah, but we're not getting results.
I understand that, I understand that.
That's what we're saying.
When I'm saying if not, opposition, they're not gonna issue two for a city the size of Kennet.
Has anybody asked?
Not that I know of.
They, they won't do it, sir.
Go ahead, Jane.
But I mean, can anyone, what I'm saying is I don't understand why. Who's not wanting to do this? I mean, who's not wanting to get the hospital to go with? Like I said, well, I go, you get one permit and a whole year, nothing done. I seen some cranes out there once, I was gonna take the thing down, they take some units off top of the building and go sell them. Where's the profit going to? Where's that money going to? Who's getting that money?
Well, that was under the previous owner.
The whole thing right now working right now?
No, 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 the, taking the cooling units.
Okay, they'll be paying for the asbestos removal.
Well, that would come under, uh, BFG, but the selling of those cooling units.
Under who?
Under BFG.
What is that?
Schneolay line. The owner of the private.
The owner of the building right now?
Yes.
So in other words, they're, they're wanting the profit out of it or spend some money, but not want to do nothing else, basically what you're saying.
Yeah, they're salvaging whatever they can, they're not building a hospital at this point.
Look to me like they're making someone's can use it either. Well, I saw a town like Kennet if they end up getting this thing up, a big three-story building out there. And nothing to do with it, let's salvage it out.
I was referring back to the, where you were talking about the cranes. Cranes were by the former owner, before Schneal bought it, that, uh, of taking the larger units off. That was, so they purchased the large units, they were already gone.
In other words, they got their monies, where, whatever they paid for the building, they sold the generator and a few other things and they.
Another, like all those?
Yeah. Correct.
What, what's really sad is that, uh, that, like the gentleman said here sitting next to me, that there's, there's a lot of, uh, this isn't the only city that's gotten affected, a lot of rural areas, especially poor, poor cities and poor towns, a lot of the rural hospitals did get shut down. Kennet's not the only one. If you were to do your research, there's a lot of hospitals, small rural hospitals that got shut down. Yes, a, a ton of them have, but the difference between them and the city of Kennet is that Kennet was able to get a certificate of need, these other cities have not, the majority of them have not. And it's a shame, it really is a shame to be able to have the opportunity, to be able to fly people up to Jefferson City and advocate for these, this group to get, to get that certificate of need and now the city's held hostage. Because not another certificate of need can be given and these people have to let it go, which they're not going to, let's not be naive. And as the gentleman said, uh, putting it, putting at this stage, putting an affordable hospital, with all due respect, sir, putting an affordable hospital or a mega multi-billion dollar complex is irrelevant. Cause they're not gonna do either or if they're not, if they do not move forward with the certificate of need. And if we can't hold them accountable and there's absolutely nothing we can do, we're at their mercy. So there's, there's, there's either gotta be something else that we can do, that you guys can suggest or have the whole, the whole city of Kennet, you know, sign some petition or, or get them revoked, which as the gentleman said up there, it's front that it's basically not gonna happen. We're, essentially we're at their mercy, we, we wasted that certificate of need, bottom line.
Has anyone spoken to the owners of the building?
Same.
Has any owners contacted anyone in this room?
No.
Anyone there?
I haven't talked to.
This thing happened so quick, I don't think there was anybody who could have talked to them.
Who, who did the, the owners approach and, and told them that they were ready for the CON?
Our state, you know, our, our state has asked Bill, why hasn't, I mean, who do you need to talk to? Now, so there's somebody out there that you can talk to to find out why progress ain't being made.
Last time I talked to someone, I talked to Kerry Nobles and I told him that the citizen.
Kerry Nobles, right over here.
Well, I told him that the.
Kerry Nobles, you know, I know Kerry Nobles.
Okay, but let me tell you what.
I'm talking about somebody supposed to build a hospital.
He went out and that's when we had the last bit of information, uh, that we did have, that he put something on the radio and the newspaper and things like that. And he did a little speed.
You all need numbers to contact straight to the people and who you're dealing with.
And, and then back to my question, I want to answer, who, who did they contact and, and told them that they were ready for the CON?
Dr. Jane, uh, the one thing, before you get a certificate of need, you need to make sure you have the financing.
Correct.
These people haven't, haven't gotten the financing. So they shouldn't have been out, given the certificate of need. And, you know, if they already have a plan and have a certificate of need and have the financing, they should have been able to start building. October first, or, you know, you know, before December.
Yes, sir.
And it's been too long. And it seems like they don't have any plans to do anything.
So who reviewed their?
So it seems like the, uh, I thought the city council and mayor went to Jeff City and supported these people. How could we support them if we, if they not the financing?
That's what I'm asking, when they came up and they said, we, we need the CON so we can proceed, who authorized that? Who, who reviewed that?
The mayor made the announcement.
I know.
Mayor made the announcement and that's why we backed off.
Did they talk to you, did they say they're ready to move forward?
And they had the money?
They had letters of intent.
Well, that, that, that's not finance.
I can provide a letter for intent as well, sir, and I can tell you I do not have the finances for a hospital.
Every board meeting, they tell us that they, they found another person to finance it. How, how come every single board meeting, they're telling, somebody's saying, oh, we found another person to finance it? Why, why do they keep changing their fin, finance company?
Council, the notice is still back to your question again, is, I remember very clearly, we had a hospital committee meeting and I don't have the date right here in front of me right now, that I do in my book here, but there was a hospital committee meeting. We all, full consensus of the committee, every member there agreed that we're gonna follow a process. This process wasn't a long drawn out process, it was gonna be, and I don't remember the time, four, six months to go through and find out several options. We walked out of meeting agreeing to that. The following week, announcement was made, like I said, the mayor made announcement that they're applying for the CON and they had to pull back into the city. There was no one related to that committee that was aware of that, that was a total surprise. It was, we found out through the committee.
The committee voted to send a letter for the certificate of need.
Back in August and half the group left before that vote even occurred. We didn't vote on it.
Not, not the particular group, we, we never voted to, to move forward with this particular group.
No, never.
Wasn't there a vote taken and?
There was a vote with the.
After they.
We were riding dead, we were riding the only horse we had, I remember that comment very clearly. And we had nothing else to do, so we walked out, we were done.
So it seems to me like they knew that that was taking place, that we were looking at other options, that we're either given furnished the information that we're looking at other options and, like I said, they pulled the trigger and they told us now they're ready.
Agreed.
So here's the, here's where we're at. Do we wanna back these people and encourage them to get more done and try to get them involved in this and give us meetings? Things like that?
I don't think.
Well, wait a minute, or do we want to try to stop the certificate of need? Send letters, send people and try to stop it and try to see if we can get a new bunch? I mean, that's, that's what this whole thing's about, we gotta do one or the other, we can't just.
Sure, this group you got right now not doing a damn good thing.
Mr. Mc, you said, you said it was impossible, right?
What?
You said it was impossible to revoke it, pretty much?
No, I didn't say.
No, can you repeat?
They said it was.
Okay, every, every six months, the certificate of, that's how I understand it.
Yes, sir.
The certificate of need committee or their staff reviews, uh, reviews any progress made by the entity that has a certificate of need. And, and they've already gone from one six month, I think another six month period is coming up. And it is, at that time, they can review any progress being made and if there is inadequate progress being made, it is up to the certificate of need committee to revoke the.
Has the city given us and this group anything, a dollar, a piece of?
No.
Nothing.
No.
Absolutely nothing. Okay. So when you talked about, I don't mean to point at you, Mr. Paul, but when you talked about backing this organization to build a hospital, right? Does anybody know of a proven track record they've got of building a hospital, operating a hospital? Cause I'm pretty sure a multi-billion dollar company, you can't make a hospital work in Kennet, Missouri? Some guys who've never owned a hospital or built hospitals before is probably not gonna make it work. Right?
Yes, sir. Especially if they're looking at other investors to put up the money.
Right, cause then they can cut, cut bait and run, right? So has anybody on this committee asked anybody at the state for an additional certificate of need? Instead of sitting in his room saying, there's already one, we can't get one? Cause if you don't ask, the answer is definitely no.
Correct.
The state, when I met with the state, uh, it was an absolute waste of time. They really didn't care about the Boot Hill of Missouri.
I wouldn't be saying that, because the chairman of the committee was in business in Kennet. She was part of one of the dialysis centers here in town. She's well familiar with how the CHS treated us and she's very well, she very well knows the need of the hospital here.
No, I'm doing.
During that meeting, did you ask for an additional certificate of need if we could get one?
Not certificate of need, there was no discussion of that at that time because there was nobody to apply for one.
So we're, we're sitting here saying they've got us held hostage, yet we haven't even asked them a question.
Is there anyone else to apply for one? That, I think that's.
I think it was thirty, I'm sure one of the thirty individuals of, of the committee would surely go together.
No, I mean, is there another hospital right now that would like to apply for one?
That's why we're here tonight to decide if we wanna go that route.
I mean.
Jake, it doesn't take a hospital to apply for one.
If someone has a CON.
Legitimately, yes. But who's to say we're not gonna be the same, voting for them to be individual?
Say again.
I said, who's to say we're not gonna be in the same situation if it is an individual?
Well, if you get thirty people from Kennet who care about Kennet, cause you're right, if you're not from the Boot Hill, you don't gonna care about the Boot Hill, right? We love it here, that's why we stay here.
Agreed.
Correct? So you get a group out of Denver, wherever it is they're from, comes in here, sees, sees an online ad that a hospital's been foreclosed on, hey, there's a chance to make a quick buck. They don't care about this, this place, so they could get ahold of the CON and hold on to it. Where the hospital group that was here, they care about this place.
I, I, I agree with you, sir, I, I truly do. My question is, do we have someone? Right now, we have someone we're not happy with. I think everybody in the room could agree with that, we're not happy with what's going on.
I can answer that question, I can answer that question, the city, CLGW has hired the consultant to represent the city to find other options.
Okay, do we have another option?
So we weren't seeking other options because we were giving a hundred percent support to this group up to this day. We need the council's approval to seek other options.
That's like asking the council if you can turn your head from left to right.
No, a year later, that's a year later.
No, I mean, I mean, you can look for another option without a CON, if they wanted a CON, obviously they can apply.
Dr. Jane?
No, no one's gonna offer another option for Kennet without having a CON.
That's correct.
If a CON is locked up, no, they're not gonna waste their time and their resources.
It has been said in this same room tonight that another CON could, not very likely, but could be granted.
No, sir.
If financing were, were available and things like that, that's the big key to it.
Y'all don't understand how the CON works. Because that comment didn't make sense, because if somebody has a CON, no, another group is not gonna waste their time.
Correct.
You know, and resources trying to decide if they wanna put a hospital in Kennet. Okay?
You're exactly right, that comment didn't make sense because I know absolutely deadly about building a hospital or getting one here.
And apparently these people don't either.
Well, opinions obviously vary in this room tonight.
Your question, health of the. So say you oppose a CON. Say we oppose, what is the negative that can come out of that?
The group that has the CON decides to pull out?
They own the building, they own the structure, everything's the same right now, they've got a permit for asbestos. So they haven't put a whole lot into it personally, but they still own the building. What's the positive?
That would free us up to look for other organizations to, uh, put in a facility for us.
And also to go back on, uh, Captain Q and, uh, they can reapply. There's no one saying they're kicked out of town. If they get their ducks in a row and actually present correct information, they can reapply. There's no loss whatsoever for you as the city council to oppose this, zero loss. It's not kicking them out of town or opening up our options. I don't see the problem of doing that. That's a no-brainer situation.
The reason, uh, that we bought, we as a council decided to buy the land. The reason that we bought, we as a council decided to buy the land in front of the hospital was to encourage action and show that the community supported.
That didn't help any.
I know that. But we did that with an attempt to encourage and show that we were supporting. We had a deal worked with them to where we leased the land for seventy-five thousand a year.
Correct.
So we, they offered, they had six hundred and forty. We offered two hundred and fifty. We got the deal. We leased it for seventy-five thousand a year. So that's what's going on with the land and all that, right?
We got two hundred and fifty times more money involved in that.
Yeah, it didn't do anything, obviously. And so that's what we have to decide tonight, is are we going to support the current people? Or are we gonna, because I think if we vote no confidence in them, they'll leave. I think they've had enough of it.
Can I make a motion in this meeting? Well, I'll make a motion that we oppose the CON.
I'll submit the motion.
And actually, what only fact the city can do, the city doesn't, of course, along where the city has no control over the CON, is that the city can oppose or.
Can we sign a petition and send up to Jeff City?
Well, make a motion and the council passes, then it goes, the letter goes to Jeff City. But what the city can do is write a letter or to actually support the rejection of the CON or the repeal of the CON for inadequate progress.
Sounds like this CON is a very, very powerful thing.
It is.
And we should be very careful with this.
Well, and it's not easy to get.
Yes, sir.
I realize they got it, but it's not easy to get it. One, I think the fee to, the fee to even apply is twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Plus, in order to get a CON, you have to show to the committee that you have plans and that you have adequate financing. We're going to take Mr. Paul Williams up there and he gets it done.
It's a.
He was our speaker up there. He was able to get it done in five minutes.
I do hate to say this, though, but if this issue with the CON doesn't get resolved, that's going to be the least of the city's problems. The least.
Well, you got a motion on the floor and everything else, but Terry said something a while ago I'd just like to know an answer to. The six months' report, what was that report? Did it come out good? They done their work in their butts off? They're not doing a thing? Or what's the report, six months?
I personally thought it was a year. That's the first time that we've heard they did six months.
They told me they were in compliance. That's the best I could get out of them.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Try again.
The best I could get out of them is that they were in compliance.
In compliance with what?
That's the best I could get. They're in compliance.
I mean, who's always reporting, who's reviewing this report?
The committee, the CON committee, actually, the first six month approval is done by the staff of the committee.
I understand that, Terry, but who is feeding this information to this committee? Can't be no brand here.
The holder of the CON.
Who that is? Huh? Who is?
The holder of the CON. The group that owns the property there.
What's that?
The group that owns the property.
But of course, you're not going to say you're not doing nothing, you know?
Correct.
Well, they have to be in charge of it.
But that's, that's who, after the first six months is approved by, as I understand it, the first six month progress is approved by the committee staff. After that, I believe the committee has to approve, approve that there is adequate progress. So it's very hard to get, but it's so easy to renew. That don't make any sense.
They mentioned that. That's true for anybody.
Is there a liaison person on the city council or from the city with the, with the developer?
I missed the first part. Can you say that again?
Is there a liaison, is there a particular liaison that the city council has appointed to liaise with the, with the hospital developer? Or is the CLGW?
The mayor is the only one that's been in contact with the group that owns the hospital.
Yeah, well, my question was, is, was, did he get that by default of being mayor? Or did you say, "Mr. Mayor, you're going to be the liaison and you're going to..."
There was nothing decided by the whole group here.
Okay, so the city council really hasn't been in contact with them on a regular basis as their progress?
We've never given any updates. We've never given any information on the progress. All we knew is, like Jake says, it was a public announcement made that this group is ready to move forward and we will call the report a hundred percent.
And CLGW is not, is not monitoring them on a weekly or monthly basis, even?
No. Let's not forget that part of their application, they were supposed to start demolition October first.
With nothing going on.
One more thing, and I'll stay quiet. I've got just a few tidbits here. Number one, all right, something that we wouldn't discuss, and I know we need a hospital, but here's some actual stats that we're collecting from the fire. So.
Well, we get those every city council member.
I agree. Yes, sir, I agree.
We've got a motion on the floor.
So you don't want to talk?
Well, no, those are given at every city council.
This is not, okay. Are you done?
So the question is, the CON.
So here's the thing I have, is, the thing I haven't heard this evening, is, you have a hospital call. Our hospitals in this area is full for the virus since twenty, for two years now, they're full. The closest hospital today that will admit someone is Pine Bluff. Now, you can go to mercy rooms and get mercy treatment. The problem is, is our hospital ambulances, or our ambulances, is our hospitals, they have to travel to these hospitals. That means that twenty percent of the time, you make a call, that ambulance is here in town. Eighty percent right now, ambulance is not here. You better jump yourself in a car or take one off. Now, we're driving not a block over, or, you know, a few blocks over to a hospital, we're driving at least twenty miles to a hospital. And I'm not taking my time when I'm heading over there to the hospital for mercy. That being said, that's a big point that we need to stress. Second to final, or final thing I have here, is I want, I know this was brought up this evening, I just want to be very, very clear and not misleading.
And I hope not to quote you that.
The vote to oppose billionaire funding is just a piece of paper that is going to be given to the committee, review committee in Jeff City.
Thank you very much.
Now, they can vote to oppose, so go ahead and issue this. But if the city council, the city of Kennet, makes a resolution opposing this, that's a very powerful statement to override. I don't see how that board will go and override city council. If anybody, they've got the pulse of this town. Your representatives should have that pulse. The committee up in Jeff City does not have that pulse. Last year, when they got the initial application, the mayor, and I don't know who else, some members of the council were there. They, everything was issued to them on the plate. Government wasn't bought. You can say it's a private enterprise. It is, but government's a hundred percent locked step into it. You bought them land in hopes that they will build.
No, we didn't buy them.
You bought land in agreement with them. You convinced the council to buy the ground because you had agreement with the billionaire funding group.
That's a theory, sir.
Okay.
There was an oral agreement.
Is that disputed?
I was under the impression we bought because it was a good business transaction.
Did it come from the mayor?
No, that was my only opinion.
No, did the mayor bring that presentation to you? Who brought the presentation to the council to vote on it?
Not entirely sure.
The mayor.
He was a closed meeting. It was real estate related. It was not directly for the hospital.
But he's the contact. The mayor's been the contact between BFG and.
I wouldn't say that for the property in the front, no. For the hospital, yes, he was the only person contacting the owners.
And for the record, please do not put words in my mouth that I never said. I never said it was the mayor. It could have been the Easter Bunny.
I didn't say you.
Yes, you did. Yes, you made very clear that it was the mayor.
All right. So if billionaire funding is not awarded CON, then what is next? And simply, there is no other entity lined up to take CON like you were asking about. There is no other business lined up. There is, as was spoken before, they quit looking. They're not going to look.
But it opens the door for another entity to look into giving us an offer.
Can I throw something in here?
Yes, sir.
I just talked to the certificate of need people just now. The woman gave me her private number so we could have a conversation tonight. And she told me that it would be, we could have a letter writing campaign, we could have signatures, we could do anything we want. If we're going to do that, she did not want us to send it to the board. We would send it directly to her so that she would make sure the board got it. She said it would be very, very unusual. They've never, she can't recall this ever happening. It could be that it would become effective this next meeting if they approved it, or disapproved it, rather. It could be that it would take six months before they decide to turn it over. But she said that definitely it would be paid attention to by the board. She did not know if they would rule and in what manner that they would vote, because it's not come up.
And again, it hasn't come up before because whoever got that CON, they were ready to move forward. They were committed to come through with the project.
She told me this afternoon that there are tons of certificate of needs that just disappear. That you don't know why they quit. You don't know why they.
Not necessarily because of opposition.
Right. She said they're just, all of a sudden, they just don't care anymore.
So then we were lied to, correct, by this company? We were out and out lied to by this company? If it wasn't financially secure, we'd have a hospital going up right now. Who lied?
We haven't seen anything in writing.
I mean.
We requested financial information. We had never given any financial information from this group.
If they had the money, they had the backing, they had all everything they need to do, and they're going to start tearing back in the hospital. And we ain't got nothing but a mess up there. So we're lying, out and out lying, instead of trying to put butter on.
With what this bill just said, I'll go back to my motion. I'll stick to the motion. To write a letter, whatever, that correct procedure, whatever, he would take.
Excuse me. But once again, I'll make a short up question. Have y'all considered discussing this with Senator Bean, with Jason Bean?
Yeah, his name has come up before, yes.
Well, he's the highest political official we have in this county.
Correct.
And if politically maneuvering could help, he would be the man. He's very pro Dunkland County and the others he represents, but especially Dunkland. I think everybody in the room probably knows that, and he's a good man.
He is.
And it never hurts to get a conversation going with him, see if he could help.
A quick thing. I know that this billionaire funding group also purchased the Underground Atlanta. And I know we're talking about Kennet right now, but if they're willing to put up thirty-five million dollars of someone's money to purchase this, along with some very cheap real estate that they can flip for higher end profit, and the promise of the Underground Atlanta is going to come back, and they haven't done anything with it since they bought it two years ago, about the same timeline they bought the hospital. If they're going to do that to, in metropolitan Atlanta, where they could make millions of dollars, why would they worry about us?
Wonderfully stated.
So they are, then, I know personally that I have met people that have worked for companies that are not the billionaire funding group to offer to buy the businesses that I'm in. That are not from Kennet, that are very well dressed, that are very, not from this town. And they come in and hope to buy cheap real estate to flip it for a higher profit. So is that what's going on here with the promise of a hospital?
At the Facebook thing, what they finally said was, "It's something we want to do. We have a main street." It's basically what they said. It was out of the goodness of their heart.
To do it for us? Yeah. For the goodness of their heart, give us a certificate of need so we can do something. Yeah.
I'm just telling you what was said.
If they're not going to do anything in Atlanta and hold on to this property and hold on to all these condominiums that they just purchased along with Underground Atlanta, they're not going to care about Kennet.
That's correct.
So maybe that sounds a little loud on this group that we're dealing with. From just a simple Google search, I'd tell you all you need to know about this meeting.
And they're telling the community, the city, who wants this, buy Facebook instead of in person?
No, they had a Facebook live for the community. They were all here in person.
Have they got their website updated?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't pay attention.
Mr. Paul. Steve, you gave me too much credit for a while ago for getting this CON.
You fooled them up there. You told them you drove to Jeff City. You flew up there. So they gave you extra time.
I have a question for Terry. If this council votes to oppose or to rescind the CON, what happens to the CON then? It would expire.
Somebody else applies for another.
Somebody else would have to apply for it differently.
If the board up there votes that direction.
Correct. That's right.
Yeah, and that's the question is, well, no matter what we do, are they going to vote our way?
To answer your question, Mr. Williams, whether we vote to do it or not to do it tonight, it's not left up to us. It's still left up to Jefferson City.
But it provides that powerful statement at the same time.
Sir.
But it does provide a powerful statement to the committee.
Agree, but it does not matter what we vote yes or no here tonight.
Yeah, it matters, because we can answer, we can answer the questions from the citizens when they say, "Have you done anything?" Yes, we tried everything we could to oppose it.
I was talking about as far as getting it opposed. I mean, the.
If the CON will expire, when will it expire?
There is no expiration that it's going to expire.
Yeah, there's a new rule.
Well, it's reviewed every, as I understand it, it's reviewed every six months to see if there's adequate progress being made. And if there is, then it continues. If not, the committee has the authority to revoke. There is no expiration.
So it's in the hands of the committee to.
Yes, correct. Absolutely.
You have to make another route there.
We're going to fly back up there, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Palmer, I don't know who you're on the phone with, somebody with the CON committee. Did you ask her if there was a possibility of us applying in parallel with sending this resolution up there, opposing?
We cannot. Okay, we as a city cannot.
I understand. That's been made abundantly clear, but is it possible for myself? Did you ask her if it's possible for somebody else, another entity, to in parallel? Because if it's going to take another, an additional six months after the cancellation, right? I mean, could we be, hey, we're going to cancel this one, but here's another one in the pipeline. We're getting ready to approve that one. So that we're not starting at zero six months from now.
We're in new territory with them. They, she said this type of stuff has never gone on that they've dealt with. But I can tell you, if the financing was tied to it too, like what Dr. Jane said, if it was approved financing, then I feel like, from talking to her, since it is such a new area, we have a possibility of that happening.
And a lot of you, the older, more seasoned people, did we not do this for the Emerson Building? Did we not have a group of people come together, buy that property and front that to Emerson?
I'm not familiar with it.
Did we, we didn't have, we did? Okay, so it seems.
So was the community concerned that financed the purchase, that purchased the Emerson Building?
So let's take that playbook and open it back up, knock the dust off of it, do it for the hospital. But I also wanted to bring up Chad's point. Has anybody checked the track record of this company? The people that are opposed to, opposing this, why? Why are you opposing it when they've done nothing profitable for this town? They've done nothing, and apparently they're not going to do anything in Atlanta, right? So why are you opposed to doing this? I'm interested to see when you guys take a vote and say yes or no, and answer why.
I'm with you on that, buddy. I'm with you on that.
I would stick with that motion still.
The way I vote is going to be the way my people and my board want.
Sir. I've been quiet because I just don't feel like I was supposed to say anything, but I'm a pastor here in town. I love the people in our community. Grew up in the church, and I found in ministry. The biggest problem is lack of communication. People just don't talk to each other. And it ends up in the church, and I'm seeing it in our city. We talk about others or talk about things, but we don't talk to people, especially in respect and in love. And it's hard when you're trying to talk to both sides. Because it affects a lot of people. It affects both sides. We need a hospital. We all know that. We're all in agreement with that. My wife was the ER director, and we moved here because my church cannot pay us. We moved here because she accepted that job as the ER director. When it went out, she now drives an hour to Jonesboro every day to be the trauma manager. It's been hard on our family, and it's hard on every family, and I understand that. Thank you for sharing your story. Having lupus, I mean, that's, we don't have a hospital in town, that's dangerous. Uh, Jake shared a story about his, was it your daughter?
Yes.
Her allergy, allergy and almost having the driver in the hospital. We understand that, we all know that. The thing that hurts me, or that affects me the most, that frustrates me the most, I guess would be the right word, is the lack of communication. In our hospital, I was in the hospital committee meetings as well, and I was under the understanding, they had everything in, in order, everything in line, ready to go. And I don't know what happened, I don't understand all that happened, it hasn't been communicated, even mayor talking to me. He hasn't been communicated, communicated too well, very well either from this group. Their certificate of need, obviously, when I called up to the city, or to the, the state as well, September fourteenth is the next, uh, they have to prove that something is being done by September fourteenth, which they have done. If nothing is done by September fourteenth, then they can no longer do any more work on that property or for the hospital. Until the hearing in November, when the actual committee meets, to decide if they can extend the certificate of need. I don't remember what date that was, November ninth or nineteenth, either way, it's still November. What we do here tonight, yes, it'll send a message, yes, it won't send a message. Half the town will be upset, half the town will be happy, or maybe it's three fourths, twenty-five percent, I don't know, whatever it's going to be. I would caution everyone, myself included, that we speak to each other in love, and in kindness, and we understand, no matter which side we're on, we all want a hospital. Am I, am I clear, am I fair in saying that, we all want a hospital? When we talk about someone, let's just say we're talking about BFG, the, Chanel or whatever his name is. When he sees in the newspaper, people upset and angry at him, what's he going to do? Fine, my hands are done, I'll leave that building the way it is, but I'm going to keep the CON. What if we come to him, what was it my grandfather always said, honey attracts? I can't remember the saying, it's always, I'm blanking my mind right now. I'm not saying that they're perfect. Obviously, we heard that tonight. It's what we have right now at this moment, right? If we can get some communication from them, with concrete deadlines, which is what we want, right?
That hasn't happened in a year.
Right, exactly. I mean, you see where, you see where I'm torn? You get both sides, and you want to help everybody, but you can't help everybody, right? It's like in church, this whole year, half the church is mad at me because I said, don't wear masks, half the church is mad at me because I said, didn't say the word masks. You see what I'm saying? So, can you guys please help us, start praying now, about the decisions that we can make for the city, because it's not easy. Everybody up here loves you all, and we want the best for this, this city, for this people. Obviously, we can't get the CON ourselves, or that'd be the solution. And then we could have whatever company come in and build it, right? So, please, help us. We, we appreciate your input, and we do really want a hospital really, really bad, we need it. No matter what size it is, we need it.
Councilman, how much longer can you keep going? I know, I appreciate the position, and everything else, but you're in a position right now that you have to know what these guys are telling you to do. In other words, if the mayor's talking, you don't know what he's talking about, you need to step up and say, mayor, I don't understand what you're saying. Because we got a lot of folks out here needing a hospital.
Exactly.
Well, can you not build another hospital over another ground and let them eat this hospital out here if they all...
The property's not the problem, again, the CON.
You mean to tell me...
We have plenty of properties to put a hospital on.
You just can't, a group can't go out here and build a hospital over some of the ground somewhere?
Not without the certificate of need.
Put a CON in place.
So, it sounds like from what you heard and from what I heard, talking to them, that no matter what we do, we're still looking at a couple of months down the line before anything is going to happen to the certificate of need.
And the reason for the certificate of need is so you don't have too many hospitals too close together.
Right.
For healthy competition.
Economic, yeah, it's economic.
I spoke to Casey there, CON board, I spoke to Casey, that's the number that you called to, to discuss. Uh, that's the lady I spoke with, and she said that when the, if they apply, and her exact words is, if they apply, and you have opposition, you need to turn in your paperwork with the, you know, with the application more or less, is how she described it to me. I don't know how you coordinate that or, or do, but...
Allison told me give it to her, and she would make sure every board...
They said email it, or fax it, or mail, US mail, or one of the other.
She would deal with it, we'll be making sure that's after every board member.
I feel like we need to make a decision here, and take it to the next step, and let them decide from their position. We need to make that decision tonight.
Agree.
Yeah, motion in a second, I say vote. Motion second, I say vote. Let's get very clear what the motion is before we, before we have this vote, so there's no misunderstanding.
Terry. The motion, the motion would be to send the letter to the CON committee, uh, opposing or asking them to revoke the CON and give it to BFG or whatever entity owns. Whatever entity owns the CON.
From the city council, from individual members?
From the city council. I mean, the motion is for the city council.
But we can have official signatures from individual citizens as well to go along with it.
Well, sure, and anybody, you know, any individual can send such a letter, but since this is the city council acting, the motion would be for the city council...
Correct.
To, to create a city, through the city council, to send the letter.
Can I read what I wrote a while ago when we were talking about it, see if it needs to be changed? The motion was to send the letter to support repeal of the CON for inadequate progress.
Yes.
If they repeal that though, does that mean that you guys will be in the position that you were before you were involved with this group? Where you have a clean slate to use a certificate, a new certificate of need? Because you could only have one certificate, you can't have two.
That's my question, what?
You can't have two, you can't start another one, and that's because certificates or needs are very specifically given, it's like a law, so that there's no, there is no, there's healthy competition, so that hospitals don't outcompete each other, and then go bankrupt, and then eventually, it's a, it's a public health concern, basically. So, you, you can only be given one certificate of need, so that needs to be cleared.
If that certificate of need is revoked, then there would be no certificate of need.
In place.
In place, and another, and any other entity can...
Wonderful, that's perfect.
If we send this letter, signed by the whole city council, signed by the city, are we sure that we can get another group to even start a process? Because if they see that, well, the city's going to turn their back on us again, if they want to do it, you know what I'm saying?
But we're not going anywhere here.
No.
Again, your decision.
How many times have we tried to contact them and they're not responding to us as a company?
Every council meeting. I haven't, we haven't gotten anybody here. We asked for updates, there was nobody.
The contact person was the mayor, as far as I'm...
Wow. You said you had, you had an update Tuesday night?
Right there.
You mean it's right there? So, you were in contact with them recently then, not too long, two, two months ago?
But as far as asking them to come or anything like that, it's, you know, I was given the ask, told that they had that.
They were asked to come in, in the last few meetings, every time, between the minutes.
Okay, we're going to have, we're going to have a delay. We're going to have a delay in this regardless, if we, if we go that route, we're looking at three, three to five years, probably before we'll be looking at a hospital.
No, sir. I, I firmly, I can't promise you, I'm never going to promise you that, but I believe that...
It's going to be sooner than this group's going to build it.
Or, or what, I think what you were getting at, do we get ahold of these people and say, come on, show us something, or else we're going to do that.
Just give them a deadline, just give them a deadline.
We did that.
Give them two weeks.
We did that.
Six weeks ago, you all told me that you was going to do that. You all asked mayor to, to get in contact with them, and then we would have an answer, because they had funding six weeks ago.
Ask the mayor if you send them a letter. We decided to send a letter.
We have a progress report, which is the, uh...
Was a letter sent?
The letter sent is the question.
You didn't send him a letter, okay.
No, why not?
But y'all as a council did, as a whole, I feel like the sense was, is that you would come back to us the six weeks and then assess the situation. I believe, Council Palmer is the way you...
Why wasn't the letter sent?
We asked for progress, and they gave us the, uh, the progress of the permit as...
What was the letter not sent?
Six weeks ago, I mean, we're here, y'all telling us there's going to be a letter sent.
Well... Still waiting on my motion.
Do you have any other further discussion within the council?
Was that what you were wanting with your comments, to get ahold of them and say, shut up or shut up?
We need to know, yeah. The thing that I'm concerned about, if we start all over, you know, and they see this letter we sent to the state, if the state sends it, they may not approve another CON.
The need is here.
Why wouldn't they? Yeah, yeah, I mean, they see the city's not behind it.
Charlie, I, I, I worked with your wife out here at the hospital, right? And I, I know your son, right? So, when, when you're trying to get your son to not do something, he's going to do it up to three, two, when is he going to stop doing that? When you get to one, right? And he's going to, he's going to quit doing it, and he can turn right back around and start doing it again, or something else. Not saying you have to back him, you know what I'm saying, understand, it helps you, right? So, if we, if we send them a, hey, we need a definite deadline this date, they're going to do just enough to get you a gift off their back, right? My kids are the same way.
That's what they've been doing all year.
So, why would we, why would we continue to extend it? And again, I really would like an answer to, if somebody has researched this outfit and a track record, where's another business that they've built? Where's another hot, let alone business, what about a hospital that they have built?
From the very beginning, but never done any hospital.
Exactly, exactly. So, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if we give them another deadline, what's, what's one more deadline, right? One more deadline, one more deadline. I just, I understand, I fully understand what you're saying, but...
Trying to be fair.
Trying to be fair, right.
Overly fair.
We've got, we've got a lot of people, we had that thirty, thirty, thirty member committee who said, hey, you know what? I'm going to, we're still all stop, all stop, because this is our option. We're going all in, we love these guys, and greatest things, this life's great, we're going in, right? And they haven't done anything. So, now, you, I'm sure you could just, you can pick up the phone today, or when this hits Facebook, those thirty people meet tonight, or tomorrow morning. I'm sure you could get that committee back together, now that they have an option. But right now, we have zero option.
I do want to mention, from a public health standpoint, there's a, there's a, a thing called a HIPAA score. And this, this area happens to have one of the highest HIPAA scores. Um, and, uh, e- essentially what that means is that there is a need here. So, there's, it's not very difficult to show that there's a need, a rural health, or a rural hospital. That's what they're called, rural community hospitals. And you can show that based on the HIPAA score, so you can apply, and you will get granted. If there's this fear that, oh my God, we're not going to get another certificate of need, that is completely erroneous, like it's, that's, that's just not the case. You can, if this CON does get revoked, and they, or they give it up because they're these generous, nice people, and they just let it go, the city can and will get another CON, because of that high HIPAA score. It's, it's actually the highest score in all of Missouri, by the way.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, in a second? Return in a second?
Yeah. Voice vote, uh, but if it can't be determined, then you hold. If you can't be determined how it goes just by voice vote, then you hold individuals.
So, the motion is, who's the motion?
The motion is to send the letter to support the repeal of the CON for inadequate progress.
So, we have the motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Naye.
All opposed?
Naye.
Naye.
Is that third one?
We sent a letter for... Yes.
Alright. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Second down.